Okay, let's go ahead and open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, 6:37 we'll start. Sorry for the late everybody. Larry, you want to take a roll, Paul?
Here.
Barb, are you here today?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Here.
Riley?
You?
You're not here? So you're in your next seat. Dambal?
You're...
Doesn't work on constant. Oh wait, no Barb, no DPW, I'm doing a dumb part. Long day. Long, long day.
I'll make more excuses as soon as I have some...
Okay, I'll accept the... or I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And motion carries. All right, do any adoptions or amendments to the agenda? I don't believe there are any. Do we have a motion to... Do we need a motion for an adoption of the motion? Okay, do we have a motion?
Support.
All right, do I have a second?
Support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, motion carries on that. Larry, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Pro book meeting minutes for March 12th, and I think there was a typo in there somewhere. Everybody have a chance there. Did you read through it? Read through it? I'm looking for it, I forgot where it was. There was a typo somewhere, but this... It was like a pass with missing. Barbara, you a quick reader? I thought there was a... that could be... I think just unanimously, I think it was just a spelling correction. I didn't see anything else. All right, do we have a motion to accept the March 12th meeting minutes? Can I get a motion?
I'm here, I don't think I should support.
What's that, Barb?
I wasn't here, not...
Oh, okay.
I don't think I should.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries to accept the minutes for March 12th. You good there? All right, moving on, IMCE, Citizens' Comments Regarding Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. All right, let's see here. Well, of course, Mr. Fields was the... First one in here.
Paul, you want me to go first?
Yeah, so Citizens' Comments Regarding Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. And you were the first in line, you came first in the door.
Thanks. Yeah, Jim Fields, 80263 Bell River. I want to offer some insight on the Memphis Meadows. I'm an owner of Memphis Meadows. There's 14 of us that all bought properties and we're given master deeds and disclosure statements and all the agreements and everything that should have been reviewed by attorneys and realtors. And 14 of us should have received the association turned over from the developer before 2025. I reached out to the developer, they hadn't gotten back to me, I phoned back up with them in January, they did not respond to me. I sent an email chain from the developer's attorney saying that they are late on turning it over with an excuse and wanted to project that out to another two, three months. The timing of that, and then you can see in the email exchange, I asked some questions back regarding our development, the lack of attention, the drainage issues, the swales not being completed, the topo not being completed, and also referencing the proposed Memphis Village. Now, as far as the Memphis Village, I became involved last year when I wasn't given a property owner's notification to come to the public hearing to see the submittal of the plans for the review meeting. So the city held an illegal meeting because the property owners, some of the adjacent were left off that list. In review of the meeting minutes of that in the video, the mayor also tells one of the citizens and property owners that this really doesn't matter, it's already a done deal, which goes against the public hearing. In our disclosures and our contracts and our master deeds, it's pretty clear that there's a loose reference to an expandable section. To verify that is an expandable section, legally you would have to have no prior knowledge or planning involved at any level with a concept of what that is. Through FOIA document captures backdating to 2021, there is a clear and defined conversation of development into a multifamily of the proposed seven, which is what they're calling the Memphis Village. And definitely as far as even showing what the proposed tax revenue and revenue would be, and citing the differences of the detention time required for phase one and phase two. So for two years prior to a meeting being held to change the zoning from R1, which is what the master plan from 2013 says, and they changed that to multi. And then in that meeting, they had citizen input and the citizens concerned were brought up and they were quite clear and asked, well, we're okay with it being multifamily as long as there are no apartments. And the developer said there would be no apartments, but yet, the attorney comes in here before the City Council and Planning Commission and says, indeed, this is going to be apartments/condos and that it would be a completely separate association run by a property management team. Now, property management team is not individual owner condominiums. That is a lease space, which is not what they said they were going to do. Now, verbal contracts are what they are, but when you have a master plan in 2013, you take citizens' input in to get a decision, you're showing a pattern of behavior and it's all recorded, it's all on video, it's all in the minutes. So there's been a push lately to, we have to get this thing moving, which is we've heard, I've heard in five meetings from various members. There is no, we have to get this thing moving, it is in the city's ballpark to enforce the city's codes and to hold the developer to hold those standards. Their plan was rejected because it didn't meet code. They didn't come back and they didn't revise it, but yet, there's still a push to get this done. So I urge the city to look at it, follow the procedures that are in place, and push back on them. They have established themselves as being very predatory in nature when we look at this. You have parts of the project not being done, topos being changed, you have flooding and neighboring properties. You have this brought up before the city council, before the planning commission, and the city frankly does anything. You have members still operating on the city that, you know, you're handling things off hours outside of these meetings when all this has been brought to the public and there's still chatter going on. You know, okay. We can go back to November and I'll stress, just like we're seeing on the national and local stage, you know, elections have consequences. If we sit back and we look at the November elections, there are some seats that changed and people that are no longer in positions. And to think that's consequential, it's not. You know, this is not a royal court, this is a bureaucracy, which has laws and standards that need to be followed. And that's where I urge everybody to look at things to the standards and hold these people accountable because they're in the community, we are the community. You know, this is the community, not them. They're a developer, they're business people. And to say that we'll get it in the future, there's no guarantee that anybody will be in business today, tomorrow, or the next day or the next week.
Thanks, Jim. All right, next up we have... I'm gonna go to Chris and then go to Tina, is that good?
That's perfect, I'd like to be last.
Okay.
I just wanted to again speak about the, I heard that, I seen the minutes that you were going to have the discussion about the condos again. And I'm bringing it up again, as I brought it up many, many times, I think putting 68 of them back there, which does not meet our ordinances, does not meet our codes. But to change the codes or give them variances to allow them to put 68 there, you're going to be putting 10% of the population of, or 10% of the housing of Memphis in a 1% portion of the land. I think that's too dense. Other townships, Bruce Township denied them putting 144 houses in a 90-acre parcel because of the density, it doesn't fit the area. Trying to put 68 condos and have one road in and out right along my property, it's going to be traffic jam. And then we can talk about, I mean, everyone, everyone's all done whole about the tax revenue that's going to be gained from it, but how much of that are we going to lose because we're going to have to pay for other things such as roadwork? Or are we just not going to do it like we don't fix the ordinance? I mean, we're just not going to fix Bell River when it starts tearing up. But, or are we going to pay for that? Because that'll eat up that tax revenue that we're gaining from that. How about more police officers? Hiring one police officer would almost eat up all the extra tax revenue from that. I think it's, I think it's a bad idea. Memphis is meant to be a small town, it's not meant to be a big city, they're trying to become a big city there. And as I have, and as I've also said before, and I really would like this board that if they do approve any, I'm not against condos. I'm not against them putting condos, just meet the ordinances and the current codes. No variances, no nothing. 68 is too many, our code doesn't allow that many. But if they're going to put anything there, when they put a road along my property, it should be mandatory that they put a fence along my property too. Because I don't need the cars coming there, the lights and everyone coming in from there. They have nothing for kids to plan, so what are they going to do? Come over onto my property and play? All right, I believe they should be required to put up a fence. A lot of communities, when you mix multifamily residential with residential, they make them put fences up. They should put up a fence, actually, I shouldn't be just talking about mine, but they should be putting a fence along all the back properties of all the houses. So, that's my opinion on it and I, I hope you guys consider it. I don't, like I said, I think 68 is just way too many, I think that's way too dense for that area.
Thank you, Chris. You got that? Good there? Okay, I'm just making sure. You're a fast writer, I can't read your scribble, but... Yes, I read it when I get done. Okay, Tina?
Well, I've been away for a while. Some of you are probably happy. Thank you. So, as my husband, Mr. Manzick over there spoke about, Bruce Township's residents spoke out on the proposed development. They spoke out about density, they spoke out about the lack of revenue that it's truly going to bring to the community, they spoke out about noise, traffic, safety, fire hydrants, the needs for all that stuff, and firemen, firewomen that we're going to need. And the residents spoke out on it and the residents turned it down. Will you send that around? Send that around? And by the way, I was the resident that the then mayor told me this was a done deal. It's still not a done deal because I'm not done. I was a little offended by your statement of 30 seconds. If you stopped breathing for 30 seconds, would you want me to help you breathe? I'm a nurse, yes or no?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I was just getting your...
Stop.
Everybody gets the five minutes, so I just...
I understand.
Where your clock was at, that's all. I have it up on the screen.
Oh, I thought you meant like the conversation you've had, I apologize. I thought you meant the conversation that you guys had outside of this meeting room was only 30 seconds.
No, no, it's, no, Robert's rule is five minutes.
I understand, I misspoke, I will apologize. Actually, the funny thing is, Jim and I haven't even spoke. It was funny because Kurt told me to go find someone to back me up, then damn did I. Moving forward from there, Mr. Fields spoke about how the individuals, Mr. Demel is coming in and wanting to build this stuff and spoke about the predatory nature of it. Now, do not rely on my word. The United States Attorney's Office, which I've had the privilege of working with for the last six months, as a legal nurse consultant, assisted me in finding some stuff that would put some basis on this. So I would like to bring with you, I just want to know, if someone was involved in fraud, allegedly, let's say, would you want them to build your house, Mr. Wilson, or to work for you? It's rhetorical, you don't have to answer. I'm just asking everybody, would you want them involved in your town? Would you want them involved in your house, near your children? We've had a lot of scuttlebutt here in Memphis and I don't want any response to it about our principal throwing an African-American racist joke out. Inappropriate, okay. It's also inappropriate to take advantage of the economically disadvantaged, disabled veterans, African-Americans, and women. I am a woman, I'm educated, and I don't feel that I should ever be used, abused, put down, or taken advantage of. And I would agree that almost everyone in this room would agree with that. The papers that I'm handing you, and there are six copies, I'm sorry that I didn't bring seven, are from the Office of the Inspector General, from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Co-owner of Nationwide Fence agrees to pay the government over $350,000 for DBE fraud. On May 22nd, 2015, Michael Demel, co-owner of, you can continue to read. From the United States Attorney's Office, which I've made a lot of friends there. Former officer of Nationwide Fence and Supply Company, Michael Demel, pays $358,707.06 to settle alleged False Claims Act violations involving disadvantaged business enterprise requirements and federally funded projects. From the United States Attorney's Office, the Western District of Kentucky, not only in our state, Memphis residents, but he went out of state. RMD Holdings, LTD, DBA, Nationwide Fence and Supply Company settles alleged False Claims Act violations involving the DBE. There are six copies. Should I go on? Office of Inspector General, report fraud, waste, and abuse. This shows the people that went to jail, actually federal prison, and other things. The amount of the MSE subcontractors involved, a total of approximately $2 million. Ms. Pepe, and I may be mispronouncing that, agreed to money forfeiture provision. Ms. Pepe was utilized as a front in the DBE. This is all attached to those underneath the Office of the Inspector General from the United States of America, not Tina Manzick.
Thanks, Tina.
You're welcome. I just have one more question. Why should we allow anyone, as women, as men with husbands, men with daughters, people with wives? African-Americans live in our, in our city here. Disadvantaged people live here, disabled vets live here. I'm off the safety, I'm now on to, do you really want this man and our child? And giving back to someone that took away from disadvantaged people? What are we? We are the disadvantaged people. We're not the one that's allowed to vote, you are. So now you have to have the disadvantaged people's backs. That's what I present to all of you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You good there? Next we have Keller here, is it Harris?
Parise.
Parise?
Yep.
Hi Heather, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you too. I just wanted to talk about last, the end of the last summer, early fall maybe, I was in, had several complaints about the flooding in our yard. We are right next to the final build, the final house that's being built and the other house that was built on Bell River, that's not necessarily with all the other houses, kind of in between the farmhouse. Their backyard goes all the way back to our backyard. So, the new builds on this one and then they go all the way back to our houses right here. Last fall, we had a lot of flooding, this was before they even started construction on the new house that was there. And then, again, obviously through the winter, it wasn't that, it was snow all the time and cold, so it wasn't a big deal, but then come this last rain we had, which I understand was a huge rain, but also, it also hugely flooded our yard. The house next to us is at least three feet, I mean, the grade is three feet higher than our house and the one behind us, the water was coming in our back fence from that property as well. I have pictures, I don't know if that'll help, but it's like, it's flooding the whole back corner of our yard coming off of there just because their land is so much higher than ours.
I saw that, I looked.
You have a couple more minutes if you like. You have five minutes.
I mean, I don't need to use the whole five, I just want to make the point that obviously, it has gotten worse since the, the house right next to us is now under, is, you know, was pretty much built now at this point.
Is it complete?
I mean, they're not moved in or anything and the grading isn't, that's not, but the siding is on there.
There was a bit of a lake right where that detention pond was slated to be built. Literally, literally right, right in that area, which was on the existing lot of the unfinished house that's next to you, Heather. That guy's yard, he was no good, would not be too happy.
No, not at all. But it's getting ready to get warm, it's going to be mosquito haven again.
Good time, I have one more thing to quickly say, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I also did forget to mention that, that he's going to be asking us for variances and ordinances changes, whatever, but we had to fight with him for well over a month for him to cut the lawn.
Oh God, do I even get me started?
He had lawn back there that was almost five feet tall and something that we almost has to be done and we had to fight with them to get it done. So, that was another thing.
You were perverted. I think that we, that's all we have on that.
Was there supposed to be a representative here from statewide, Mr. General?
I was not notified at once, I checked my, I checked email.
That's the other thing, they don't even show up. Come on, you don't show up and show out for yourself. It's ridiculous.
Okay, is there any other further communication, I'm just going through the paperwork here, besides the... Well, it's communication, I consider communication, so, do you wish to hit the reader on it? Do I pass that on? Moving on, so no further communications, new business statewide submittal planning. And why everybody's here today.
But for that, that's only the request by the mayor and the mayor to send back to everyone.
What are they requesting, Mr. General? It's a letter from statewide, did you say, Mr. Wilson? Was that from you or the mayor?
No, it's from statewide here, we should have it in our...
No, no, it's...
Yeah, I did.
No, that's... It was only a request by, the mayor couldn't be here today, but she was requesting that the other Memphis Planning Commission have a plan to review the statewide for one day or set. Just to send her to review.
So, my question is, what is this, what is the planner going to review? Are they going to review the ordinance and say, yes, it's fixed?
That's what they're supposed to, that's what they want, to review it and see where, by the way, if it's any violations of ordinance and so on, just to review from that.
So, what we have here, just have our planner.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I'd like to know before you point to the app.
Have, have we asked?
This is everything that's been submitted to the city council and the planning commission multiple times. Everything in that submittal that you're trying to review back to the planner, that doesn't meet code. Now, to sit here and say that, we're going to push this, this, like I said, we want to push this through and whether it be the mayor or Mr. Wilson, you might as well consider, right now you're looking at a representative from statewide because that plan had been kicked back to the developer. There are notes, matter of public record, on what they were supposed to do and bring back to the table, so they've done nothing. So, here we are, seven months later, with a change of seats, trying to push the same plan back through now to a planner when it's already been shown to be not compliant.
Well, and I guess, I guess here's my only issue and I think it's extremely important, Al Francis, nominal attorney, I know him personally, I've seen some of his communications and what he's saying about the ordinances, I think we need him to give a summary of his opinion of all of these ordinances. I think, and we know that looking at our ordinance, that the city attorney, his interpretation of what we're supposed to do, if he is saying, these ordinances don't make sense, we can't build this and it fit in the ordinance, then I don't know why we would even waste the time with a planner to review it. Because we're going off of what the city attorney says. And, again, I spent 10 years of my life becoming educated, I spent a lot of time and a ton of money to go to law school and to review ordinances and statutes and I do this all day long. I think we need to trust Mr. Francis and need a summary from him or his opinion before we send the money out to a planner for them to say, well, we don't know because I don't understand what this statute is. That might be on it.
We all sat here, and, and I don't want to throw you under the bus Kenny, but you know it's coming. And Kenny said, this ordinance doesn't follow this, this ordinance doesn't follow that. I'm so glad a legal person is here, I want to talk to you. Kenny himself sat there and said, they want to do this many feet, this is what our ordinance says. The, and I'm not a real estate person at all, so, but, from the, what do you call that? The line, property line to here is so many feet, well, they want to back it up so many feet. The variances of that, you know, and the height, and we, we have been over this and over this.
Well, and then I think what we're getting into is instead of, you know, trying to amend it and well, we're just going to let it slide this time, we're retroactively letting them build with an ordinance that has been set in stone and relied upon over and over and over again. So, I think before we even send this to a planner, first things first, we need a summary from Al Francis to go through all the ordinances that are relevant to anything that has to do with the factors. And whether they go for the parking issue, that goes for the drainage, the building, the hunt, whatever it is. We need...
We need clarification.
Right, and honestly, I'm sitting here thinking from a lawyer, I mean, an attorney's point of view. I don't want to get into building something that clearly doesn't fit the ordinance that is going to cause Memphis a legal battle.
Absolutely.
Right down the road. I'm not trying to get sued, I don't want anyone to get sued.
Me neither, that's why I brought everything from the United States, not me.
I'm tired of being sued. I don't want to see more more cases.
No, there's not...
I do lawsuits all day long, I just rather...
If they want to submit, it says statewide submittal to planning. So, they haven't made any changes, we haven't seen any changes. We recommend the changes as far as if I, my memory serves me.
Right, and if there's been no changes, now, now granted, I haven't looked at the ordinance. If there's been no changes and it sounds like it is what it is, there is absolutely no way we should submit this to a planner and waste their time, our money, for them to say, yeah, it doesn't fit in zoning, I can tell you right now it's not fitting in zoning, just let me sit. I mean, it's not...
There's some glaring differences, there's obviously a few glaring differences that we all can agree on.
Right, right, right. I mean, and overall, I'm, I don't think that we should bend over backwards and let them conform to what they want. If they can't fit in our ordinances... fit in our ordinances, why would we allow them?
Can I just ask a general question, particularly from the planning commission? Does anybody, could I, I mean, I may miss this, but, uh, had there been any preliminary plans submitted to the city concerning that eight point three acres they wish to develop? Anybody? I'm not talking about what they gave or what they brought last month, last year, anything. Does
You can't have the actual preliminary plans for us to...
Has there been any preliminary plan, conceptual or otherwise, been submitted to the city of Memphis concerning the bill they wish to execute?
The only ones I remember seeing is, uh, and I'm sure Mr. Dunbar can agree from counsel, that I think we just have the conceptual plans.
So again, that's, that's in the past. So, we still have not received.
We have not.
We have very clear process for application for building condominiums in the ordinance. Very clear. And that involves submitting a preliminary plan. Now, whether they want to stamp those plant, those plans and put the current data on them, I'm fine with that. I don't care. But submit it. Not only that, but you know, we would like to get as much documentation. I, I think we beat this horse up a number of times too.
I believe in you.
And we still have not, to my knowledge, that's why I'm asking. So, what are we even reviewing? Why would I even send it on to a planner?
Honestly, I thought I was coming here tonight to see something new.
Well, again, I just wanted to clarify that for my, for my own. And also, there's a bit of confusion to me too, and maybe somebody can enlighten me on this one too. This started out as Memphis Meadows project. When that project is X amount done, it's supposed to be, uh, there's supposed to be a homeowners association agreement drafted, signed and filed. As far as I am aware, that has not happened. And we also have the responsibility as a planning commission to initiate a final construction review. As far as I am aware, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that has not taken place. Meanwhile, I'm a little confused because they wanted to change the name apparently of the second part of the bill. And to me, that would seem to be a new project. If a new project is being built, then I need to see conceptual plans. I need to see a preliminary application pulled from the city. I need to see the documentation. I need to see the money put down to cover the costs. And to my knowledge, again, correct me if anybody knows different, that has not happened. Also, if they're calling that eight point three acres something else other than the Memphis Meadows project, where does this leave the people who have bought into Memphis Meadows? They still do not have a homeowners agreement.
Pass it down.
We still do not have the right of ways.
These are proposed.
Filed for the, uh, the drainage swales to give Memphis the opportunity to go in there and fix a problem like we had with the, the plumbing over there.
And what I'm wondering is if they're trying to.
I don't care what, I'm not being, you're being, I'm not, no, no, excuse me, Tina. Don't break my train of thought, please.
I'm sorry.
Because I'm trying to get the information here. And I want to make, make sure that, that I'm not off on a rabbit trail here.
The same.
I, I, I'm not, I'm unaware of any of those things. So, do we have two different projects going here? Or is this an extension of the old project? If it's an extension of the old project, how come they haven't finished up and given the, the homeowners association agreement on file? How come the detention pond hasn't been built? These are a lot of looming questions here. And I still have not been satisfied to any of them unless I can be enlightened here. But those are a few things that just right off the top of my head that do not sit well with me.
Now, the only plans that I see that, that are submitted for planners now are the proposed ones that were dated in.
Yeah, that's what I'm aware of too.
That's the only ones I'm aware of. These are plans right here that were sitting here on the desk.
So, it never been resubmitted. I think we need to case just.
They have not been resubmitted.
Just give us what you have. And then we would, normally, of course, I think we discussed before, we will point out those, those variances that need to be addressed and point them over to the zoning board of appeals who will consider their appeal and either agree or disagree, uh, you know, ask them to do something about it, amend their prints, but that has not taken place either. Whether that's set or prints, the same ones they, 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 they know what, they've been informed in writing three or four times about the height variance, concerns about the road widths, uh, and a number of other things.
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, yes. Setbacks.
And they've not acted on that. And I will not sit here and be defamed as the planning commission counsel here that we have been negligent or lax in our duty to responding to the builder. I can pull up a dozen different communications I've written to them, asking them to expound or explain or clarify or help me understand where you are in this process. And I'm done ticking them all off and giving the dates and the chronology. It came out to where I just said, please, just submit what you got. I've gone to McComb County and I've looked what's on file. There's nothing has changed for the, the condominium planning commission in McComb County, who's a governing body along with our local ordinances on how this stuff takes place. I'm done.
Hey, I'm just saying.
Ken?
I'm sorry. What's the difference between preliminary and what they sent? You talked about preliminary. I don't know the technical difference.
It's in the condominium code. Ken, read it.
But I don't know what an actual preliminary plan.
Well, you have the conceptual.
Read it. It's in, it's in the condominium code. It's, it's right in there. It tells you exactly what it is. Conceptual plan, it tells you right in the code. I'm not gonna regurgitate all that here in a public media. I've done that a number of times already. I'm not doing it again.
Ken, can I?
Sure.
So, with the way this is planned out, I mean, the conceptual plan for what they're planning to do with that eight point three acres, the city has had eyes on since 2021. And that's the conceptual plan that came through.
This is also what was submitted.
Came through before the planning commission, when a public hearing was held to have a hearing on the conceptual plan to approve it, to go into a preliminary plan phase, which would then go to planning.
It just says draft.
Planner and engineering to make sure everything was good, that you're okay with the concept. Not goes to preland. Preland goes to professionals and then they mark it up and then that comes through before it goes into final submittals. That's usually the three step process.
Section 105.109 here. Because I'm a psycho, I print everything.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, that's the nutshell of it. You should have.
If the preliminary plan was, I was at right here, a hand and crayon written on a napkin compared to what they have here. Is everything that's in a preliminary, would it be contained in this? Or are they just completely not sending us anything? That's.
That's as far as we have is the preliminary.
So, this is all the way over there?
That's all we have right there is the proposed, what they want to do.
That, that explains what the elements are. And I'll, I'll be completely honest with you, there is so much error. I've been trying to get through it, but I have a million other things coming on as well. So, um, that, that right there is the code that explains what the preliminary is and what the elements are that has to be met before it'll be considered preliminary.
Cool. That plan has five major.
Feel free to re-schedule the plan, Zambu, and, and they just can't leave here. I got to put them all back.
Since planning kicked it back, they would have to apply for variances, to get variances from the ordinances. To do variances, they have to go before the ZBA and they have to prove a hardship. The problem is a hardship cannot be self-created, which is.
And these are just drafts. They haven't been submitted, signed, or I guess they didn't have a realization. I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
These are the drafts of the deeds for the project. This is what was submitted, this was what's sitting on the table.
Those are just generic forms you can pull up and everything. They don't need to think.
It just says draft on it, so they're not official.
And we got people here with homeowners condominiums, they know whether they've got a homeowners association.
The homeowners association is part of the S D bylaws that the city approved for them to build.
Right.
The homeowners associate, everything is all written in all the contracts. You have all that for us. So do we. At seventy-five percent of the bill, the, they were supposed to turn over the association to the owners, which they've not done. They are now seven months delinquent in breach of their contract to turn over the association. Okay? They sent that communication out. I gave you the emails from the attorney where I brought up a lot of these points that are not done in our bill. I'm a property owner. This is a property owner. We bought houses in Memphis, three, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We got a project that's not done. Hey, city, are you gonna get your developer to finish the project that we bought? I'm not trying to stop a developer from doing business, but they need to do business under the code of law and respect the city, the citizens and the property owners, which is us.
Finish what they started and then move on.
Exactly right. And they're in breach and they've acknowledged that they're in breach of their own contract. Now, we could go way down the rabbit hole, which you can read in my writings. I've been doing this for a while because I deal with codes and ordinances too. And I have attorneys as well. So, we can push back as, as far as we want to go. I mean, it's not a win-win situation. I don't want to put the city through that, but, you know, they don't want to turn it over to the owners because then all four teams get together and then we go, hey, we're gonna go into arbitration now because you guys are screwing up here.
Jim? Jim, with what you're talking about, as far as them turning over the association to you guys or them keeping it, what would be the advantage, disadvantage to both parties by what they're doing now? Does that help them? Does it hurt you?
It helps them because, A, we don't talk to each other in a group because at that point in time, we have control of the contract. So, we can look at what they're in violation of. We can take them into arbitration and we can sue the developer for breach of contract.
That could be a strong point.
Right, absolutely. Which is, which is what I've been bordering on doing for the last fourteen months on my own. So, I would rather have fourteen of the people on board because we all have the same grievance. And it's gonna wind up in somebody's lap unless things get rectified.
What they have to do to let you guys start your own?
They just have to turn it over to us and relinquish it. Then we vote to board in. The association. They have not yet turned over the control of the association. Once that happens, we have control of everything in the common property. So, we can change and modify the bylaws. We can, you know, we're the ones that are responsible for the detention pond and everything as it was built. Well, it's not been built, so, you know. If they turn it over to us, then we turn around and we go, okay, well, none of this is right during this. You need to fix all this and we're gonna go to court.
So, I think we should just table this, no action taken?
Table, I don't know. Uh, I think we ought to have some sort of course of action to go for, go for from here. We've been tabled this thing for years.
What was on the agenda was to send this to the planning commission. We're not, and I'm just, and all I'm saying.
Statewide, seminal planning.
Statewide will send that, the seminal planning. So, all I'm saying is we'll table it, no action taken at this time. And we can sit here all night, so let's stop it right now.
Amber, did you have something?
Or we could ask them to submit an application if they wish to continue to build.
Well, hold on. My question is, what we're saying is right now, we do not want to send these plans to the planner?
That's right.
Yes, to the planner. That's what this is. That's what this is, statewide supplemental planning.
Yes.
What I'm saying is.
You have to make a motion and take a vote.
That's what, that was on the agenda, so let's, and it's.
You want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we table it and do not send it to the planner at this time.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm not opposed.
Okay. You seconded by Riley?
And the vote was, uh, let's see, three, sixty-one?
No, I don't know those.
Okay, four, two, okay. And that's, uh, that was Amber and.
Please, just.
This is like Groundhog Day. I'm sorry. This just goes, we have the same conversation immediately. Seven months later, it's the same conversation, the same plans, the same results.
I think we.
Go ahead, Barb.
I think we know what the issues are. I think we know. No, Larry gave us a lot of information about, we know what the issues are. We know what needs to be changed. We know all that.
We need to, we need to notify them.
What, Barb and I say this in all sincerity, if we know all the issues, what is the next step?
We need to.
In your opinion. I'm asking an open question. If we know all the issues, what needs to happen next?
I guess it's up to statewide to, to submit, um, to ask for variances.
I think that's various due to observation.
Well, thank you.
I'm serious. We have, we have looked at this, we've talked about it. We know what we need to move forward to it, but we have not been able to get statewide to take the next step so that we may, as disinterested party listening to both sides of the equation, move this process forward, say yes or no or modify. We cannot do that. We are in a state of suspended animation still because we have no action to move this forward.
Then I'd like to, I guess retract our last vote and revote. And being a chairperson, I say we make a motion to, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to word it. Um, their next, state, is send this back to statewide for them to, uh, request for variance or, will it go to ZBA? Send it to ZBA for a variance? Is that where it goes? Like I said, I'm moving it. I, I'm still learning this here.
I think they need to just put an application in.
They're, they're not gonna have whole new property, but they've renamed this. It's a new plan. They need to resubmit.
Okay, so.
Can I?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
They, if, if they want this, if they want this exact same plan to go back through and go through the motions, they need to resubmit this plan and say, we're not changing anything. We're gonna roll this. And then that plan has to come here and then you have to deny the plan. You need to make a motion to send it back, tell them where they're not compliant, which you already know the five points of code that they're not compliant. Send that back to them and then they either make the choice to modify the plan, which to date, they've not done anything to it.
Damn, don't I?
And if they choose not to do that, then they can try to refile it and approach for the zoning board of appeals. And then they would have to prove that they would have a hardship to grant variances, which it's self-created, which there's no legal bounds, but it's their money and it's their time to do it. Variances are fifty-fifty. And then it would go to the ZBA and the ZBA grants two of the three. Then they would have to redraw the plans, incorporate what the variances were allowed, what it wasn't, and bring that other plan back in, submit it back to planning. And then by that time, it becomes a preliminary plan if it's approved.
Well, we have a motion. So, let's move on.
I'm going to ask the question, clarify, before we vote on that.
Go for it. I'm not, I'm just trying to understand. It's like, where do stalemate with these plans? So, we need to do something with them? Either tell them, no, resubmit them.
But this plan's been voted down twice.
Can I ask why? Is it?
Because I, I don't think at all it needs to be sent to the planner. We, we don't even have the, we, we don't have the attorney say to say that, yes, this makes sense. I don't want to jump hoops.
I thought the vote was not to send it to the planner.
It was to table.
To table it. I, I don't even think it needs to be tabled. It should be a flat.
It was to table it for tonight.
Right now, until we have attorneys' view on it.
Okay. I misunderstood. No, I.
That's what I said. That's why I wanted to retract that, retract that. Can we retract that?
You can make a motion to do that.
Can I make a motion to retract our last vote?
No, I, I have to make that motion.
Okay. I think that would be in our best interest.
And whoever's seconded has to do the same thing.
Second.
So, this motion is to retract the last.
Of tabling, of tabling the supplemental.
So, you know where it goes from there? Say we're on the same page. We're on a page.
I, well, I have one question. Before we decide where this, where the next step is, um, I want to know, and I'm, I can't remember just reading it. Um, is there like a quote unquote statute of limitations? How long do we have to wait for this? If they're not, if they're not responding to us, they're not doing anything, at what point do we say, not a problem anymore? What is that? Is it, is it two years? Because how long can we be like this? You know what I'm saying?
Those proposed plans are from October twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three is one of those. I'm not sure if the date on the plans are the.
Andrew, I think, I'm not gonna swear to you, but I think it's twelve months, twenty here.
So, so we can say right now, we're done. We're done. If you want to resubmit something, go for it.
I'll watch out.
That's why I retract. That's why I request you to.
So, like, why, why don't we?
You want to make a, um, how do you want to, if you'd like to make a motion on that and?
Uh, how do I say this?
Well, we haven't, wait a minute. We're, we're motioning ourselves here and we're not voting on any motions.
We retracted our last vote in regards to table.
We haven't voted on that. Yeah. To retract.
Okay, so do we?
So, we need to do that first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion to retract our last vote on table?
You have a motion and a second. Time to vote.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This is to retract our last.
All right, let's, now, now we can do something else.
Okay, so, then, my next question.
Moving on. Yeah, let's go.
So, my next question is, one, do we have some sort of, um, contract, um, some sort of agreement that is. that is somewhere out in the abyss that could be looked at to decide? Because if it is, if it is the twelve months and I, that sounds right, but again, I read stuff all day long, so I'm not sure.
I think it's in New York. I think it's in New York.
Okay, so there is nothing to say that like they asked us to keep this open for twenty-four months or thirty-six months, whatever.
I have not seen anything come across our table.
Okay.
The statute of limitations are up. You need to reapply it from the beginning.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. That is the only, Kenny, what do you have to say?
I think they did reapply. I think with their most recent letter and I think they submitted an application.
Where is it?
On, on the March twentieth of twenty twenty-five.
I agree with, I agree with you. They sent the letter and they sent a
An application.
And you reviewed it and I reviewed it. I didn't see much difference in the plan itself. And I think what you have to do now is, is, I'm not sure that I would want to do this myself legally here, but, but if we could submit that to our attorney or, or well, I suggested the planner, but that got turned down, but to review it and then, then those that are in violation of the ordinance, then they notify statewide. And then if they want to pursue it, then they go through for variances at the ZBA.
When they reapply, did they resend a check to reapply?
Well, they
Because I would have to if I let my expense, they run out, I'd have to reapply.
Well, they submit, they did, they submitted the letter and they submitted a ledge or revised prints.
So we, well, where are they, Larry? I mean, if they
They're here. You got, you got the letter.
That's, that's, that's all they submitted for an application process. That's the only information that we have.
So, so I'm
Yes, sir. I thought, I thought that last fall, as you guys talked about, a new submission process where they would have to submit a blank check or a certain amount of money to go towards a planner and somebody to shoot the levels out there and figure out the drainage. And that you were going to incorporate that as part of this process. But I don't, I'm not sure that ever happened. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I do.
That's why I asked for the additional check.
From that conversation, we found out that they did originally submit about $3,000 to cover those expenses for review, for our engineers, for various things that took place on that first time that they went around, which still is rather nebulous in my mind because I never really knew anything about it until it hit the planning commission. I guess Larry and Bart were maybe the only people that I'm aware of that were really talking statewide at that time.
This was back about four years ago.
All right.
So they did do that. They did submit a check, but we did not ever, never moved forward to set an amount or to codify it or anything like that.
Is that in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, it just says they, they must put a deposit.
They put money down for the first
So they put a deposit down? I doubt it.
But let's not forget, then they changed the depository back there when they moved all the dirt and scraped it forward.
Well, let's not get on the grab.
I know, that's a grab.
Trying to stand low.
So
Just on, on the same thing. So we're on phase two now, right?
Not necessarily.
No, no, I mean, as far as proposals and paying for people to tell you what you need to do as far as the lawyer and engineers.
They are on phase two. You're correct. They're on phase two.
They need to do something different though.
The plan has already been reviewed by, by our, by the engineer. I think they paid roughly six, seven, $6,000 for all of, and what's been reviewed.
Let me see that, tap it down there, Amber. The one that has the writing on it says, don't leave this room.
Well, I have an interesting question that maybe would be very simple to pose to our attorney. And that would be, in Mr. Francis's opinion, is what they're proposing on the eight point three acres, a phase two of the original project or is it a new project? I would really like to know that.
Right, because it says right here, and this is section one, five, oh, point, one, one nine, this is preliminary plan requirements. It says, this is subsection five, that upon completion of the preliminary plan review by the planning commission, the applicant has twelve months to submit the final plan for review. Should the final plan in whole or in part not be submitted within the time limit, the preliminary plan must be submitted to the commission for review. Again, the review will be conducted using the requirements in place at the time of the new submittal. So, well, my question right now is that, okay, they did resubmit.
They just sent a letter saying you're recently
Well, they haven't yet.
I don't see
Nobody knows?
Yeah, they sent a letter with the
Because, because what
If this, if this is it here, it's the same, same cut down plan as it's there.
Well, it appears to be. I, I did review
How do we know?
Well, so
Just a minute. When I reviewed the resumetal for the plan, I didn't have the original with me. But when, from memory, I thought it was the same. I don't know for sure, but it probably is the same. Now, that resumetal, and I think that Ken looked at it, Ken, and we basically say the same thing that they submitted. I think then if they submit it, if you want, send it to, well, send it to our attorney, who's that, and have him review with that, with the ordinance at the end. If that's what you want to do.
Excuse me, can you guys just take a short recess, like one minute? Can I, so I can change this out?
Yes.
Sure. preliminary plan up quite a bit. So basically, it's what you like, can't say here's my, my picture on the napkin. So I think yes.
Hey, I've just been here two months.
No, no, I know. I'm just giving
Hey, you're fine. But you're a little more interested here and we're learning, we're all learning together, more or less here.
As, as an outsider, and I just want a real quick question. I mean, okay, so statewide wrote a letter and they said that this is the plan and you're considering a resumetal. What check did they write for that resumetal? Because if they didn't pay for that resumetal, then it's not considered a resumetal. When I resubmit for permits or variances or anything or any code stuff over there, if it gets shot down the first time when I resubmit, I start to feast our structure all over again. So if I paid $3,000 on a plan for, if I'm doing a Kroger, which I've done, I've got eighty-five of these across the state, and I'm doing a Kroger in Grand Blanc and I file for a plan and I pay my money there and then I have to go for a variance for a resumetal while I'm going to pay it again, it's not that money. And then this may be semi-approved, part of it gets kicked back. So that's approved and then I got to bring back my other part of the plan to adjust these things for variance and I'm paying for the variance and I'm paying for that resumetal. And then once that comes back, I got to resubmit it again for another permit, which I'm going to pay again. So I'll ask, when they sent the letter in this plan to you and the mayor, how much was the check? Did they pay for it? So if they didn't pay for it, then you're just doing this. Because I've only heard one transaction financially of X amount of $1,000 associated to Memphis Meadows. Nothing to do with this plan. So did they even file, when they, when this was reviewed last year in the public hearing, did they pay for that? Doesn't sound like it. And they sure didn't do it this time. So there's, there's money that's been exchanged.
And that is one of the requirements, as it says
Absolutely, it is.
That the applicant shall submit to the clerk in support of the preliminary review a serviceable check for the sum total of all applicable processing fees, including review fees, planning fees, engineering fees, attorney fees, and other applicable charges as specified and approved by city council. So we have had that check.
When Eric brought that up, that was, that was discussed was the fee structures to deal with this resumetal when it comes.
So that's one of my questions. Was, was there any payment for it? Because what this says is enclosed by the site plans, but
And we were being quite generous when that discussion took place, Amber. I think I proposed five hundred bucks just to get something on the books.
Man, no, we need like ten grand.
Oh, I know.
That's not going to do
That's what I called it up, that they spent six thousand.
Oh, I think, I think ten grand is even low. I mean, these attorneys are going to process.
I'm on
Four to six hundred dollars an hour.
It shouldn't cost anything.
I know.
It shouldn't cost the city anything.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And we got a lot of problems to deal with there. So it's going to be a lot of time involved.
I'll tell you, for me to get this information I have right here, I've had to pay for it at the city. I've had to pay for my request. I've had to pay for statutory reminders. I've had to do FOIA requests to get these records, to get all this information. I've had to pay for my attorneys. I've had to pay for my private investigators to get this one.
Well
So they're not paying you, then it's not anything.
As soon as the clerk gets the check, they're supposed to give, they're supposed to give a written notice.
No, so we're not, so we're not beating a dead horse.
We're clarifying where the horse is.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say. We're clarifying everything here. And then do we want to make
In my, in my opinion, right now, I think there is a horse to beat. If we haven't got this check.
That's what I want to find out.
Better metaphor.
It would be like me coming and saying, I want to build a house and I paid for it and I disappear for three years, but I have a piece of property. When I come back in three years to submit to build my house, I have to pay again. So, right, here's where I'm at with it. I don't, we're making any sort of motion. Where I'm at is that we need some question. I need to figure out if they have paid. If they paid, that changes the entire game. Then there is a horse. If they haven't paid, there is no horse. There's no horse. So that's what we need to figure out. So I will call around and ask whether I need a rest. But that is, that is the question that has to be answered before we do anything else.
I'm making a motion. We figure out if there's a horse.
I second that.
Okay, so how would, how would we word that? So we have it, you know, proper undocumented?
Ask the clerk if payment has been received for the application fee.
For, for the village, you've got to declare
Yes, for the village.
This village project.
So, all right, I lost it. Hold on. Okay, so I guess, and this wasn't even part of our minutes today, our meeting.
But the paperwork associated with that check have to have the right terminology of what they're calling that project?
They're calling it the horse. This is a whole new horse, though.
Right, right. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that
No, I was
Something that we can, something that we can
I understand.
Sink our teeth into, that we can get over to the, what we want, Amber, you know, what we want our city clerk to find out is, was there a resumetal?
Right.
Where's the
There's no, there's no money.
There was no money transaction.
All right, then we're going to have to ask.
And for
So this is, so this is eventually a mute point. It's dead.
Okay, then it's dead.
It's dead.
If they want to go through the process and do it correctly, then we'll cross that bridge when you get there. But there's ordinance that has to be followed and if they're not being followed, there is no horse.
And thank you. That's what I want to find out.
I think we've reached another bit here for today.
So in regards to the statewide's middle of the planning, it is a mute point. It is moving on.
Before you move on.
Yes, sir.
I still don't think that the first phase has been completed.
No.
I don't believe so.
So I don't, I don't understand why you even accept the proposed plans for the next phase when the first phase has not been completed.
I, I think the first phase is dead. If it's been twelve months and they haven't done anything that we've asked them to do, that's part of the statute is that they have, they have to keep it moving.
Well, the first phase was the houses on
Yeah, first phase, this is phase two, the condominiums.
Oh.
The fourteen houses that
Right.
There's no detention pond built that's flooding the neighbor's property. All the rear's wells are not pitch cracked.
The drainage is not complete.
The drainage doesn't work.
But this phase was completed because then you have an HOA.
It's not, it's not complete. The construction of phase one's not complete. So they're in violation of that.
Right.
And turning over the HOA, they're in breach of their agreement contractually to all of us. So that needs to be addressed. Now, the council and the planning commission have supposedly sent stuff to the attorney, sent stuff to Francis, and this stuff supposedly went to statewide on doing that. And the email string I gave you, I asked these questions of the attorney in an opportune moment, and of course, they just kind of put that off. I mean, this detention pond in phase one cannot be rolled out into phase two, which may A, never happen, B, if they're not in business, and C, it could be a while. So you can't go another, you can't go another season of that not functioning, not being there. Now, when you drive by a construction project, I drive by them all the time, the first thing going in is all the drainage and everything in all these places. So this one is back asswards. There's no drainage that's been put in and they're still trying to push it off. Now, I had a surveyor shoot this property and I'll tell you why. From the surveyor's point, what he said is, they don't want to put the detention pond in because they changed the grade of all these projects, which don't match the print. And by lowering that grade, they need the earth that's in the detention pond proposed to bring the grade back up and restore it to do the build that they thought they were doing, which means they would have to access all of our properties and mess those all up, go beyond the eighteen-foot easements to be able to retract that, which is against the law. So again, they don't want to turn over the association. Everybody should know that if they're in construction.
Right.
I mean, it's all there if you read between the lines.
Yeah, I got some questions for Francis.
Okay, so, let's see. We good there? I think so. Just trying to kind of, I'll see if we need a motion on that as we're killing it.
Well, personally, I would give a check. I'd take it on forty-four.
Okay. All right, so
Yeah, we need a drop down.
Okay, good. Moving on, unfinished business. Review the master plan. Everybody know. Amber took a lot of time. She organized Dropbox, she organized files. Everybody has a draft of what's been done so far to the master plan. So there's, and that's including, oh, actually, my fact, since this was Amber's little project that she did, I'm going to let her go with it.
You're probably so sick of me talking and I
No.
But we're getting places. So, okay, so I went through everything that you put together. I looked through the emails that you, everything as far as what the drafts were and essentially what they were going to say. So I was able to print this up. I moved all of your drafts to one document, so it's all together. It's still kind of a rough single document, but it is there. So there's, essentially, everything is there that needs to be there. I cannot make things pretty, so that is something I will either YouTube University or have help with. Either way, there's two sections that, or I'm sorry, there's three sections that we are missing completely. That being section six, well, hold on, section five, section six, section six, which is our natural features. Then section nine, and, which is the community development plan, which now I think I have a better idea of what to say. But section ten is adopt and implementation. So I went through and I looked at Bruce Township and Riley Township and their master plans and kind of put together what their goals look like as far as like our sections that were missing. So I can probably put something together, but this is, the only questions I really had is like, what exactly were you guys looking for to, like, what goals did you want to see on all of this?
Well, I can get you to real, real quick, and that's from Caslau's plan, we, we've talked about a little bit, and, and her master plan update, just an overview, outside of things that you mentioned, some other things that could be in their community description, updated demographics, understanding the city context around the area, administrative structure, roles of government about service to land use, decision description of current land use, classification of the city, current transportation in the city, natural features in the city, services, infrastructure, vision of the city's future, land use clarification, very important. Want to have a down the road view of service infrastructure, natural features protection, policy recommendations to implement the city's vision, and just a couple other ones broadly that, that Caslau has presented as strategies for adopting the policy recommendations. An appendix, which includes all the approving resolutions, all the public notices recorded, transmit letters to local state agencies required, and full public input results. Public input shall also be collected, which includes public survey, various public input meetings, and public hearings. And she goes on with a couple of details on timeline. Maybe we can get into that when we, when we hear from her.
Well, I just wanted to get this at least put together so we all have something to look at, because I know this kind of, like, we've been talking about the last couple meetings. Everything, everything was there. It was just a matter of like putting it together to present something.
It's a lot. Like I said, a lot of us just don't have that skill actually produce the document, but I think we might have somebody who can.
I don't have the skill. I just
No, me neither.
I'm a little
I'm with you now. I'm with you. I was happy to contribute, but I'm not the guy who's going to be lying the boxes out and do it. And there's a lot of other things that we, we should still include as it is being drawn together.
Right. And, but I do think like having this in front of us, looking at it, okay, we are a lot closer than I think it felt like. Because I do think that now we know what we're missing. Now we know what needs to change.
And who's our planner? I think I have her name already. I'm sorry.
This is Karen.
Karen, hi Karen.
Chairperson, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. The chairperson of the planning commission is, is it Mr. Missouri?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I go up to the
No, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Karen LeVere and I run my own consulting firm of just me as Caslau Planning. I used to work with Steve Caston, with Caston Planning[1799.31] I used to work with Steve Kasten, with Kasten Planning Group. And before that, I worked for Kenneth Swagster, as well as Virtual Royal. Mr. Weaver approached me back in the fall of last year with just asking for some consultation services for a single project, which was just looking at the street ordinance for private roads for a condo project, what my interpretation of that was. Since then, I provided analysis for that. After that, I was approached asking if I could provide a proposal for the city of Memphis for their master plan, and I received a partial draft. I think I just got like the demographic information. So it looks like you guys have been working on it. I wasn't sure what the extent was, so my proposal is basically for just hourly services, for whatever you guys need help wrapping it up. You guys might not need that much help. It sounds like you guys got a lot of that information already. But if it's, you know, I didn't know, have you guys done a public survey yet? Have you guys sent the notices to all the surrounding communities?
No.
Because I'd say, if you guys are working on the master plan, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires you to send those notices to surrounding communities so that they can provide comments as you're going through this process. Because maybe one of your neighbors is also working on the master plan. Maybe they have a really good idea for a certain area, but it's an area that maybe shares a border with you, and they need, you know, maybe they want to get some input from you. Maybe they want to share their input on something they're experiencing in a different part of your community that they share a border with. So there needs to be these notifications, you know, have you guys done a public survey? Getting input from residents, business members, anyone who has property in your community. So that would need to be a part of the process as well. And we try to get this input early on in the planning process. But it sounds like you guys got the demographics, you got maybe existing land use. I'm not sure what you have. But so basically, knowing that maybe you guys need a lot of help, maybe need a moderate amount of help, maybe you just need a little bit of amount of help, that's why my proposal is hourly. And I cap that hourly at $10,000. Do I think you're going to get near that? No, probably not. To be honest, the last plan that I worked at was for Casco Township. We, I worked with Mr. Kasten, but we provided that for them, and I believe the fee for that was about 5K. I just finished with China Township. They reviewed their latest, they reviewed their last master plan, and they made a decision of, hey, we're just re-adopting that. I wasn't sure, how are you guys going about your master plan process? Have you read your old master plan and said, hey, you know what? A lot of this stuff still sticks, but maybe certain areas have changed? You know, I'm not sure where you guys are in this process. But, there's a bunch of different ways to approach master planning. If you look at a lot of townships, sometimes you'll look at their master plans, and they're like 200 pages long. The approach now is to make a readable document that people can actually use and read and understand a lot better, as opposed to being told, well, go back to this appendix to get more information. So, if I were to assist with you making a master plan, I would encourage having a more dense and condensed document so that we don't have a 200-page document, maybe we have a 50-page document that people can easily flip through and understand, you know, what's going on in the city, what are the goals, and how are we accomplishing that, those goals? And again, you know, the master plan is to serve as a guide for the community, and it's going to be really important when rezonings come up and other certain reviews that the planning commission goes. Yeah, absolutely. But, so, you know, I'm here to help if the planning commission chooses to hire a consultant to assist, and how much my assistance will be, that's completely up to you guys, because it depends if you guys have done a lot of work. But again, this is what I'm proposing.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to city council that we hire Kazlo Planning to assist us as needed to get our master plan finished at the rate of $60 for an hour. The original cap, as I just hear Karen say, was, it would not be over $10,000, but I don't know how, actually, word that, I don't want to paint you into a corner.
No, I'd say $60,000 an hour, not to exceed $10,000.
Alright, this is exactly what Karen has sent us. And send that to the planning commission, or rather, to the city council for their consideration.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Well, now that we have a rough draft in our hot little hands here.
Add at will.
Well, it makes you happy, bro.
Yeah, well, maybe at the next meeting, if we all read this in the meantime.
Add to it, that's why there's some extra pages. Amber put a lot of effort into this. I was over at her house, and we were organizing.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful.
I went through, I brought my box of doc, my box of meetings over, and she was, I've never seen so much paper fly.
But now, you know, now we have a tangible document. Now we know what we have.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we didn't know what we had for a while.
So you all can thank Amber for that.
Well, no, honestly, I use all of her stuff. I just-
Yep, you got to see that. We just went through.
It's a team effort.
Yeah, it's a team effort.
I will say that I did go through the MPEA, and I am just getting acquainted with it. So, I do think that there are a lot of things that have to be done.
Yes, there's like a process, like I said, you tell notice everyone, hey, we're doing the planning process. You have public outreach. When you guys get later on the process, typically, there's like an open house to get more public feedback. Once you guys have developed a draft that you are comfortable with, that you like to explore with it, you have to send it to all your neighboring communities, including like utility companies and other major service providers in your area.
Right.
You hold a public.
And these are things that you would take care of, if you were-
Well, I can draft the language. The city would need to send that.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, but you can draft the language.
I can draft the language, and, yeah, I just like that. And then, I have to hold a public hearing. You have to have the draft available for a certain amount of time, so the public can comment on it. And then, finally, for the final public hearing, you make a decision whether to adopt it or not. And once you adopt it, there's a process for adopting it as well.
Right, right, okay.
Good?
Perfect.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Sorry it took so long.
Karen, are you going to be leaving?
I can hang out.
No, I just want to give you this.
Okay.
For this, that's just a bunch of stuff that I have.
Moving on, comments from commissioners?
I don't even know if we do have to prepare you. But that's just more information that I have to explain, I-
No, great.
But no, no, I know you, I'm sure, I'm out, thank you so much.
Good. Ken? Steve? Any comments? Any remarks?
Yes, I'd like to see this process continue to move forward. That's all I have to say.
Actually, there's one to add. This, we all got this. Is anyone planning on doing this?
Oh, yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, me and Buck are planning on going. This is the workshop for the planning commission.
Yeah, I've got another, I've got a conflict for that day, but I wish I could go, because that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think it's definitely interesting.
We all could use a little more professional training, and those are good opportunities. I'm glad somebody wants to go, if you might want to, one or two.
So, is this, so you mentioned that this is on the city will pay for it?
The city will pay, yes, yeah.
So, do you want me to just, should we just fill this out and then give it to someone?
Get it to Donna, we can leave it in Donna's mail.
Leave it on Donna's, yeah. Why don't you do it on somewhere? I think I might just take that day off, or do a half a day, and I can-
I'm just going to dip out for work early.
You can just put it right here, too.
Yeah, put it up there.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Zambu, you going to want, you want to, are you interested in that?
Yeah, I've already got it filled out.
Okay. Ken? For the workshop, interested in doing the workshop?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, you have it. You just filled it. She, we just submitted it to Donna, and then she takes care of, or Amber, and she'll take care of it.
You did come up with the nicknames, because every time you say Amber, it throws me off.
Okay, Randazzo.
Thanks, Amber.
Clerk.
There you go.
Randazzo and Zambu. Okay, anything else? Alright, I am good. We get a motion to adjourn. Okay, Larry makes a motion in about a second. Zambu seconded. Alright, all in favor? Aye.
I always want to do this, eating the dinner.